What generally happened was instead of following the Constitution, which was to restrain the federal government, we had forgotten about that. It was meant to really put strict controls on the federal government, but there were to be no restraints on you, on the people. It was to make sure that you had your freedoms, your individual liberty, your privacy, and the government off your backs and out of your wallets. And yet, just look at what's happening today. Whether you talk about the Patriot Act, I don't even think we need the Patriot Act. We don't need that to be said. And how about this Bill Stop Online Privacy Act? We don't need the federal government taking over our computers and the Internet. That's for sure. The Patriot Act essentially repealed the Fourth Amendment. It means that the government can come in and look at anything they want in our houses, on our Internet, our phones, and everything else. And if they come into our houses, and we're aware of it, and you're aware that the federal government came in and searched in your house and didn't do anything more than search, just the fact that they did it, if you tell somebody else, becomes a felony. You're not allowed to even tell your attorney, your preacher, or your wife, technically speaking, that they were in there looking around and maybe taking something, but the federal government comes in and says, "No, you can't even tell anybody." But just recently, and it came up last night, and I got to comment on a little bit, and that's National Defense Authorization Act. Of course, there's some good spending in the Defense Authorization Act. But they also put some bad things in these bills. And my rule over the many decades has been, don't get in to the bad stuff just because they have some good stuff in there. That's how they erode the Constitution. That's what they've been doing here. But the provisions put in here a couple of weeks ago is really bad. You know, I mentioned last night very briefly, because of the timeline, that one of the bad things that happened during the last 10 years has been the change in attitude when we go to war. First, we don't declare war anymore, which is pretty bad. That's what the founders gave us and our Constitution gave us. They knew we had to have a national defense. They knew we might have to go to war. But up until World War II, we declared war, and they were short-lived, and we all got together, we fought, and won them. But now, we go to war, but not only do we go to war without a declaration, it's terrible. We go to war under NATO and United Nations. We should never go to war under an international government. But they have gone one step further. And it was always the pretense it was defense. You know, they're attacking us. In World War II, there were flaws in our system, but they attacked us. They declared war against it. It was pretty cut and dried. But now, the new doctrine is that we can and should, matter of fact, the policy is we should go to war because they might do something to us someday. It's called preemptive war. Other people call it aggression. And it's terrible to have to call attention to this, but it's the truth. And we shouldn't be doing this. And two reasons they'll go to war and to start the war. One is, maybe they'll do harm to us someday, which is we ought to keep an eye on them. But the other thing is, we go to war now because we want to change their government and mold their government and change their way of living. I mean, what makes us think, even if we are, for many reasons, an exceptional nation, what gives us the right to believe that we can take our exceptionalism and force it on somebody else that undermines our exceptionalism? But we have been doing that. We're getting ourselves in a lot of trouble. We spend a lot of money. And I think we do not lose one thing. Had a little debate with this last night with one of the interviewers, that every time you spend more money in the military, it doesn't mean you're spending more money on defense. Sometimes it's almost the opposite of that. And Eisenhower warned us about this. Maybe the contractors will have more influence than you have on when we go to war. It's one of the reasons why I think we get so much support from the military personnel, because they know what's going on. They've been over there. And I am very pleased that we get more, like twice as much as all the other candidates together from active-duty military people. But we should never ignore the threats. That's the purpose of the government, to protect this. So if somebody's planning, and we can find out, we should do something about it. But this whole thing that if we overdo it now, there's actually a pretty strong movement in Washington around the country today, although more people are starting to speak out against this. And they think we need to invade Iran and bomb Iran and start a war, which makes no sense at all. They can't even make enough gasoline for themselves. And the evidence actually is very, very good. According to even our CIA and Secretary Panetta, he says that they're not on the verge of it. The UN inspectors say the same thing. So we ought to, I think the greatest danger is overreacting. But we were able to contain the Soviets. They had 30,000 nuclear weapons during the period of time I was in the Air Force. We had to contain them. And finally, they bankrupted themselves. They were foolish enough to invade Afghanistan. Could you imagine such a thing? But the whole thing is, is the answer to the Soviets actually turned out to be having a little common-sense conversation. I was called to duty in October. That's when I received my draft notice. And that was the month of October '62, when the missile crisis occurred in Cuba. And it ended up Kennedy actually talked to Khrushchev, and they had agreement. "All right, you take those missiles out of Cuba, and we'll take them out of Turkey." Which sounds like a pretty sensible resolution to that. So we shouldn't be frightened about talking to people. I say, "Well, some of these people you want to talk to aren't really nice people." Yeah, but do you think Khrushchev was a nice person? And look at how much negotiation we did with the Soviets as well as the Chinese when they were ruthless, killing hundreds of millions of their own people we still thought was in our best interest. So that is what I'm trying to do, is to tell people that we don't have to shoot from the hip and have a strong national defense, be reserved at it, and contain people if they provide a threat to us. But, you know, when we take our oath of office, we swear to uphold the Constitution against all enemies, you know, foreign and domestic. I am convinced, having been in the military, know a little bit about what's going on in the military, I am convinced our military is in good shape, very good shape. And we're not going to... I don't think we have to be frightened that we can't take care of ourselves. And yeah, at home, Patriot Act and these other things, and attack on our privacy, and attack on the Internet. But on this National Defense Authorization Act, this is the one where they now have literally put into law, codified, the power of the President to arrest any American citizen he deems as a threat. Deems as a threat even just associated with a group that might be a threat. And they can arrest a person by the military. The military can arrest an American citizen, an American citizen can be held indefinitely, which means forever if they want, and denied an attorney. Why are we so frightened about using the court system? Sure, there must be some that you have to, but why not arrest them and take them to court? And they say, "No, you have to haul them off. They are so dangerous. We have to put them in a secret prison, torture them, and do all these other things." But you know, since 9/11, I think this is a very important number. We have arrested 372 individuals, and they're in prison. 260 of them have been convicted through our regular court system. I mean, this whole idea that they want to sacrifice the court system and be able to arrest anybody anytime they want because you might be so dangerous. I mean, some of the comments last night were actually frightening to me because, "Oh, they're criminals. They're terrorists, and therefore we put them in prison." No, in America, we might be suspects, but we're not terrorists. And even if it's a bad guy, you want him to get the due process because that's what we want. That's what the revolution was fought for. If we give up that, we give up a big hunk of what has made America great. The economy obviously is the big issue. But you can't talk about any part of the system without talking about the deficit. We need to take a hold of the deficit. That's why our economy is in shambles. All we can do now is pay interest on the debt. We're working hard. We don't have the jobs. We had a 30 million increase in population in the past 10 years, and are essentially no new jobs. So there's a lot of underemployment and unemployment. And this is why the expenditures go up, and the income does not go up, and something has to be done. My modest suggestion is, in the first year, cut $1 trillion out of the expenditure. The plan that we have written up is written cautiously. It doesn't solve all the unconstitutional things we do, but we do pick priorities. And there are many priorities that we can cut. I think there's so much overseas spending, we should address that. There are departments that we should cut. We should go back a couple of years on the budget levels. And actually, we can do this with not going after Social Security and medical care benefits, if you want to put that at top priority. Because people have been taught about it. How do you get out of, let's say, we want to be idealistic, and we want private medicine for everybody, which is a nice goal. But how could we do that when the government's now involved in 75% of delivery of health care? And it's getting worse. So this is why I try to preserve that and hopefully work our way out of it. If we would do that, balance the budget, and invite people to opt out of the system rather than dragging everybody into the system, that's what we don't need. More people depending on the government. It's very clear in our Constitution and in our traditions that life and liberty comes to us from our Creator, and it's very important. I think life is precious as an OB/doctor. I know it's precious. I know that unborn life has legal value to it. And that if we ignore that, if we're careless with the definition of life, believe me, it becomes more difficult to defend liberty. Because I am an arch-champion of individual liberty to allow people to run their lives as they see fit. But I do not believe I can make the case for it. If I say some life isn't very precious, and we can do away with it out of convenience. So there's a big difference from that. So life and liberty is key. And if we do that, and you do have your freedoms, and you have your incentives to take care of yourselves, you have to have the right to keep what you earn. If the government's taken 30, 40, 50%, and they regulate you to death, and they tell you how to use your property, today, you might have, might, to build a house or to close in a ditch someplace, you might have to check with the EPA and all other kind of people and get rules and regulations. So we have lost our true right to own our property. We should defend the right to keep what you earn. If that were the case, you would not have an income tax at all. A lot of people ask, when they hear me talk, and they know I'm firm on my beliefs, they say, "It won't work because you're not willing to compromise." And I say, "Well, that's what we've been doing. We've probably had way too much compromise for too many decades." But that doesn't mean you write people off. What you need, I believe we all need, is the understanding of how a free society works. Because freedom brings people together. Everybody wants their freedom to run their own life as they choose. We understand this in religion. Everybody has different religions, but we should respect these religious values. And if we recognize that freedom brings people together, both in the social sense, but also in the economic sense. You know, you should have a freedom to spend your money. That doesn't mean everybody's going to spend their money the same way. Some will be savers, and some will sort of spend and all. But in a free society, they get to make the choice. So in many ways, it brings people together, and it's coalition building. Even today, the things that I stand for, I think there was a poll just came out yesterday, that if there's a national poll today with me running against Obama, it's essentially even. So there's a lot of appeal. So there is a lot of appeal with following the Constitution, understanding liberty by bringing people together for different reasons. That, for me, is so much better than getting together and saying, "Oh, this group wants to spend money on this, and this group wants to spend it on this, so we'll get together, we'll spend it together, and then we'll print the money, and everybody's going to be happy," until the whole thing's down our head. It's coming down our heads. We're in the middle of that. This is why it's serious business. This is why we need to do something. And there's reasons to be optimistic about this. Because the country is changing, and the first thing that has to happen before you have the change necessary to go back to a republic is the recognition that we're in trouble. And the American people are, let me tell you, I talked to a lot of young people. And they know what's going on. They know what they're getting, and they're very open to the ideas of liberty. So there's reason to believe that there's a remnant of people out there that have been seeking along these lines and just needed a little encouragement. And we also have the young people joining us. So we do have a grand coalition. And I believe very sincerely that we can change this country back to the republic we deserve. Thank you very much. We're going to have time for some questions. And there'll be a mic passed around. And I just want to make sure I hear the questions. A strong national offense isn't provided when we become the policeman of the world, where we get involved in internal fears of other nations, or whether we go in and change government, have regime changes. That, I think, undermines our national offense. And we get involved in wars that aren't declared. We don't know why we're there. We don't know when they're over. And then they just pursue. Then they had this grand debate last night on, "Should we talk to the Taliban, or shouldn't we talk to the Taliban?" But we should have done this debating 10 years ago. And that's what I wanted, was to debate 10 years ago. But what they like to do is describe what I'm talking about as isolationism. And it's a term deliberately made to make it sound bad because isolationism sounds like, "Oh, you don't want to talk to the world, trade with the world, or get along with the world." It's really exactly the opposite. Isolationism is more of people who want trade barriers, walls around us. You can't go and come, and put sanctions on other countries. Those same individuals that complain about my foreign policy of being non-intervention. They're the ones who are the very first to put on sanctions. "Oh, sanctions are a cure." But sanctions are an act of war. Can you imagine if a country put sanctions on us and wouldn't allow oil to come in? That would be an act of war. This is why I bring up the subject of the Golden Rule. If we don't want people to ban oil imports to our country, why should we do that to another country? I don't know why that is such a negative term for people to boo that and say, "Oh, yeah, the Golden Rule is really bad." But you know, the Golden Rule isn't a Christian principle. It is a Christian principle, but it's more than that. If you look at the six or seven large religion of the history of the world, in one way or another, they recognize this whole idea that you treat people the way you want to be treated. And this idea that you can't do that unless they're perfect. Well, I don't think we should do it until we're perfect. And that would put... But I think the question is premature because we want to see... We went away until Saturday, not to see how I do, but to see how we all do on Saturday. But I've been asked that, and I've been asked that a lot by the media. And I actually feed that every once in a while on TV. So I told a fib, so they asked me that the other day. And I said, "That's the 179th time somebody has asked me that question on TV." So the next day, somebody asked me, "I don't know which number is this, but I'm going to ask you again." But the truth is, I made up that number. It might have been only 175, for all we know. But it's not likely. But I don't give anybody the satisfaction of saying that I've conceded the race and I'm going to go off and do something. There's a lot of difficulty in it. So I, one time on Fox, they asked me and pressed me. And I wouldn't give them this absolute no. I said, "No, I have no intention of doing it." And he says, "Why, why, why?" I said, "I don't want to." So right now, we're thinking about Saturday.
And do you think that would get worse if we take away the...
Okay, I think I heard the term EPA, right? Is that what you're talking about? No, I think it's an important question. Because I can't imagine anybody not caring about the environment. But I start off with a pretty strong assumption by the evidence. And that is, the more dictatorial the government is, the bigger the government, and the more the property is owned by the people, by the government, and all the people rather than individual owners, the worse the environment. The environment is better cared for when individuals have a responsibility to take care of the land for themselves. That doesn't solve all our problems. Because if you have air pollution or water pollution, it has to be resolved. But I don't endorse EPA approach. It's a bureaucratic approach. It doesn't mean I don't think the federal government should ever be involved because I think at times they would. But the EPA is absolutely out of control. The Congress creates the EPA, then they come along and they write regulations, which are laws, and they do whatever they want. They're virtual dictators on what you can do with your land, and they put you through hoops, and there's all kinds of court cases going on. And that is a bureaucratic monster. But the basic principle of a free society and property rights is nobody has the right to pollute their neighbor's property. You don't have a right to dump your garbage in their yard, nor your smoke, or pollute their water, or their air. And that's a good principle. That still doesn't solve all the problems. If you live in one small little community, and some one person is dumping sewage into the river or garbage, it's pretty easy to identify, and it should be stopped, and should be solved quickly. When we had the Industrial Revolution, there was little respect, lessening respect at least, for property rights. And big corporations and governments got together, and corporations weren't held accountable. They just let them pollute. My wife and I were raised in Pittsburgh. We couldn't even see the sky until noon time. Sometime, the sky was so black from sweat. And the rivers were terrible. The fish couldn't live in the river. Nobody would get near them because the cities dumped their sewer in it. So it was a combination of big government and big business that polluted the air. Pittsburgh did get cleaned up a long time before the EPA. Local property rights city ordinances had said you had to quit doing this. So there was some changes. Where the federal government might need to be involved is, let's say, there's a river dividing two states. But most of the time, it was intended that the states would have agreements with each other. Two states could get together and decide to solve those problems. When they cannot do it on their own, the federal government would have the authority to intervene. The federal government would have authority to negotiate pollution problems on our borders and under those circumstances. But the bureaucratic approach, where you have an independent bureaucracy that can write law and then flaunt it and have such disrespect and disregard for industry and for private markets, then we'll get into trouble.
Just on that thing, what would you take somebody who's concerned about national parks in your ideology?
National what?
National parks. Do you value that as something the federal government does?
I'm sorry, I don't get to work.
National parks.
Parks? Oh, okay. Well, you know, ideally, in a society, in a free society, parks would either be locally owned, state-owned, or privately owned. And it wouldn't need that you have to have national parks. But let me tell you, if all our other problems were solved, we had a sensible foreign policy, we had a monetary policy, and we were all thriving, and there were national parks, I would say, it sure wouldn't motivate me to go into politics, you know? I would do what I could to try to maintain parks, especially the Grand Park. But the government owns a lot more than parks. You know, they own as much property as one-third of the United States. Everything east of the Mississippi, that's how much land they own. Texas came into the Union, and we had no state-owned property. We're getting more and more all the time because if the federal government comes in. But it was all privately owned. It was developed in resources, and they worked out oil rights and everything else. So it can be done. But on parks, I think that should be low on our list. And if you had some national parks, that wouldn't get me too upset. But if you wanted to be an idealist and set it up and say, ideally, would you have to have the federal government to do it? I would lean toward, though, allowing people that use the parks to pay user fees. Because, you know, what percentage of the people get to go to the Grand Parks out in the West? I have no idea. But let's say only 5% ever get to use it. I mean, why does the 95% pay for all the expense of it? So if it's more local or more private, or even if it's federal government, I think a user fee isn't the worst thing to do. And even, you know, ideally, you can come up with all kinds of schemes about private highways and all, but that's not going to happen. But we do have a user fee with our highway fee, you know, our gasoline tax. Trouble is, they take that money, and then they spend it on something else. Then you have to get a new appropriation, then you have to play politics to try to get your money back to your district. And then if you do, then you get accused of, you know, getting special interests and using power to get your money back. But a user fee is good. If you had a user fee for our highway, what you could do is have one person in the office, "Oh, we got umpteen billions of dollars in gasoline tax." And all they have to do is divide up the people in each state, or the size of state, send the money back. You could do that with one guy on a computer. But instead, we have a Department of Transportation that probably has tens of thousands of people, you know, playing politics with it all. Let's see, we have one more question.
Okay. My name is Bruce Rivera. I was born in Nima, Peru, 18 years ago. And I got a kidney, kidney just two months ago. My question is, is on immigration. Would you adopt a similar strategy to Donald Trump and improve the OBI program, which is a digital legal? It's not technically illegal, but you're not a citizen yet, but you have your adoptive assistance and all, and you're able to have work and use that all over the country to have a sign of citizenship. So my question is, would you adopt... So my question is, would you adopt the OBE program as a national offense?
Well, you know, we do have a major problem on immigration, because the number of people who are here illegally, and that is a major problem, probably 10, 12, 15 million. I think the fact of the matter is, is no matter how badly people might want to round up everybody that came in here illegally, they might have been here five, 10, 15, or 20 years. Physically, they can't do it, and there'd be a lot of problems with that. But that doesn't mean you should say, do anything to encourage illegal immigration. And in Texas, illegal immigration is a great burden, because in the southern part of Texas in particular, our hospitals and our schools actually go bankrupt, because they're not getting taxes, and yet they have to provide all these services, and it's a major problem. Immigration, I do, in my book, Liberty Defined, I do a whole chapter on this, and I tie it into the economy. There's less problems with immigration when you have a healthy economy. We really need more workers, right? Even today, in spite of our weak economy, there are business people who come to my congressional office looking for people who are better trained, and they want them to come in, and it's difficult to come in, more so now than before. But if you had a healthy economy, we could be more generous with our immigration policies and make it legal, have more workers coming in. This whole idea, what I don't like is this idea that lock them in, they're illegal, and give them magic citizenship and become immediate voters. I don't think that's right. I don't think the federal government should ever put pressure on South Carolina to provide welfare benefits for illegal individuals. But having more resources at our borders, I think, would be helpful for immigration purposes. I complain about us expending so much energy and lives worrying about the borders between Afghanistan and Pakistan, and we are not even paying any attention to the borders south of us here. Yeah, they're more attention. And we have major problems down there, and it's related to the drug war, which I don't think is very sensible either. But last night, I mentioned the fact that 47,500 deaths in the last five years on the Mexican-Texas border. And that's not, some of that's related to illegal immigration, but that's not it. It's really over the drug war. So we have a lot of wars to worry about, war against our civil liberties, wars overseas. But the war on drugs has not served us well. It's very expensive, and we put a lot of people in prison for non-violent crimes. And I've come to the medical as well as a political conclusion that it should be treated more like we treat alcoholics. Alcohol's a deadly drug, and we should be very respectful for it. Every time somebody drinks, we don't put them in prison. I mean, and if they get, if they become an alcoholic, we try to get them treated, you know, therapy. But if you're on other kind of drugs, we want to put you in prison, and then they come out hard. It's really a bad program. I think the American people are waking up to this. I think it would go a long way to undermining some of the excuses for our local as well as federal officials busting into our houses, looking for somebody and looking for trouble. Anyway, thank you very much. Great to be with you.